Because I know he walked back in. At least we can get this started. We're running just 15 minutes behind, 17 minutes. Okay. I'd like to go ahead and call the special council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, May 1st. And it is seven, excuse me, it's 8:02 PM. We have had a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, may I please have roll call?
Roll call Mayor Corvino's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Here.
Counselperson Mathis.
Present.
Counselperson Jager is not here. Counselperson Roman.
Here.
You have a call.
We may get a motion to approve the agenda. There is one item on the agenda.
No approval.
Motion's been made by Counselperson Mathis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselperson Roman. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, the agenda passes. Acknowledgement of visitors and special presentations. We don't have any special visitors besides two wonderful residents. Panoni's here and our interim chief and Robert Rono, project manager. At this time, good and welfare? Anybody would like to come up and address anything on, at this moment? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go right into the first agenda item. Stormwater facilities plan. There was two town halls on this subject, correct? Okay. There was two town halls on this topic. So I thought it would be good for you all to come up and just brief the council on, from that meeting, the changes that were recommended. So I'd like to not only hear from Panoni, but I want to hear from our project manager as well to ensure that we're all on the same page before we go to the resolution. So we'll start off with Kelly and Steve. Just walk us through the presentation.
You have to come through it here. Sorry. We've got to figure that out.
Hello, can you hear me now? For the record, Steve Elias. So as the mayor mentioned, we've made a couple of presentations. We had a public hearing for the public for the stormwater master plan. And just kind of put in perspective while we're here, twofold. This facilities plan or the stormwaters master plan is an update to the 2002 stormwater master plan for the village. And by preparing that, we did it in a way that complies with the DEP facilities planning requirements. So that will put the village in a position for funding assistance for any of the stormwater projects. So that was the reason why we did the project, why we undertook the project. Kelly will go over the details of the plan and the findings and the recommendations. But it is important to note that we're doing this in parallel with the sewer project, the Phase 1 sewer project. And one of the recommendations is to implement a Phase 1 stormwater project at the same time as we're implementing the sewer project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly. Kelly heads up our stormwater design and master planning efforts in Florida. And she's a former water management district employee, has, what, 20? 20-plus years, I don't want to give away her age. We'll just say she's got a lot of years' experience with stormwater planning. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly Cranford.
All right, thank you. This is the same presentation that we presented at the hearing, which I know some of you saw and some of you were not able to as soon as Vanna gets up there. A brief background, which I'm sure you guys are all aware of. The village was founded in the 1930s. It's been developed over time. It is mostly built out. In 2002, you adopted a stormwater master plan. And the recommendations of that master plan have been implemented. So our task was to update that master plan based on the sea level rise and other things that have happened in the last 15 years. We also looked at funding in the form of a low-interest loan. For the sewer projects, there is a grant program. For stormwater, there is a low-interest loan program. So that's what we are planning. Typical South Florida drainage, it's flat. It drains from the roads to the canals. The canals sometimes get pumped. You have a gravity, had differential into the Biscayne Bay. Water quality is of a concern as reflected in the village's ordinances. Any new project, any new discharge, will have to have a water quality component. The village uses a couple of different techniques, which I'll show on different slides. And I believe those have been working fairly well as far as low maintenance for the village. Next slide is the predicted sea level rise. This is from the South Florida Climate Compact, which I believe the village participates in. I know the counties do. So it isn't a straight line. It gets worse as you go out. So in 30 years, they're predicting it to be a wide, about a foot difference between the high and low, depending which model is correct. Next slide. South Florida Water Management in Cooperation with FEMA developed some models to predict sea level rise in the C-7 basin for which El Portel is at the downstream. So it's a big hill, big basin, and you guys are the last, the last bit of land before the outfall. So the yellow represents a greater depth of flooding. The blue represents a little bit. So you might come live with the blue, yellow, not so wonderful, which you already know. Okay, so this is today's conditions. This is 2065, so 50, 50-ish years. It's pretty much the same areas, but the depth of the flooding will be worse. So you have time to plan, but the scientists say it's coming. And this one's just, there's a differential of about a foot and a half between the different models, depending which model is used for sea level rise. So you can either have a little bit of problem or a lot of a problem, but you're going to have more flooding. We also use one of our consultants, Coastal West Consulting, who does a different type of modeling. And theirs has the same sea level rise differential, but one thing that their model does is to tell you how many days of tidal flooding the village would receive. And you won't receive it directly because you have a structure. But the structure is gravity-driven, so the head differential, you need the head of water to push it through. So you will start to see, in about 15 years, you'll start to experience sunny day flooding. So just another thing to be aware of, and you know it's coming, you can plan for it. Can you back up one, Steve? Okay. This is just a simplified graph, 2038, which was the year we ended our stormwater report. You're going to be seeing about 6 to 10 inches of sea level rise by the end of this planning period. And then in blue are the areas which South Florida Water Management District said would be the areas of concern, where I know you have seen some amount of flooding. I would watch, the northeast area is new. It wasn't in the 2002 report. So we're not recommending that to be the first phase, but I would monitor that area. This model, as well as another one that we ran, showed that there might be some groundwater issues by the time we get closer to the 20-year period. Key village milestones. The village has been very proactive in their stormwater management system over the last decade. 2002, you created a stormwater utility, which has been very busy. You also adopted your first, I think that was your first mass stormwater master plan. In 2006, you actually got a pump station in Yzma dedicated for Miami-Dade County. So that's at the end of, is that fourth, fifth? So it's there. Your stormwater system is designed where if you chose to get a stormwater pumping station in that location, it's all set up, ready to go, if you find you need it. In 2010, you also got funding from DEP in South Florida to design a seawall, which the construction bids came in high. It was not pursued, but you did, you did get that step done. And then in 2016 and 2017 is when FEMA and South Florida conducted their regional study, of which FEMA, I mean, El Portel is part of. So that brings us to 2017 and 2018, when we did the stormwater facility plan incorporating the regional findings, as well as some village-specific modeling. Stormwater conveyance. I believe you all have lived in Florida for quite some time. So it drains by gravity or by pump into the Biscayne and into the Atlantic Ocean. Your neighbors to the south have a pump system. The village has tried to stay more quiet, more passive in their stormwater management, and it's worked fairly well so far. But over the next couple of decades, you may have some issues. Stormwater treatment. There are a couple different options. The village uses a vortex to separate the solids before you discharge into the Little River. You also have percolation trenches, as well as percolation wells, which let some of the water drain directly into Aquifer rather than all running directly into the Little River. And those do have some maintenance required. Stormwater discharge, you do have options. Like your neighbors to the south, you could opt to do a pump system, where you can continue to try and make things work under gravity. They will work for a certain length of time. But if the district's models, the South Florida Water Management District's models show once the elevations in the Little River rise above 10 to 12 inches, you're going to need a pump system. Or either, or either design your village to accommodate the flooding. You either give, it's up to you, whichever way you want to go. But it's, once the water gets to that point, pumps will help. Again, their model also shows, once the, if the water rises an additional foot, so two feet above where it is today, all the pumps may not keep up. So you may get, spend millions of dollars. And then in 50 years, it may not be adequate. So another decision doesn't have to be made today, doesn't have to be made in five years, but you will have to make that decision. So next one, did you want to do the finance part? Uh, okay. You can't hear me?
No.
Kelly, you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go into the finance part. So for all of us, give us the exact, the easement that we have. It's north, the intersection.
It is south of Fifth, so near the southwest corner of the school.
Okay.
Is that Fifth? So where the big green space is.
Third.
Is that Third?
That's Third.
Third?
That's Third, okay.
So you have some bore techniques. You have some water quality devices already there. But I checked with Orlando with Craig A. Smith, and he designed that to have a pump station. So if at any time the village decided and got funding to go forward with a pump station, you have the easement, you have everything ready. They have a preliminary design ready. Pop it in, and you can go. But a pump system, you really need the seawall. Otherwise, you're just recirculating the.
The last question I had was, you know, we're talking about 10, 20, 30 years, and lord, I don't want to really think about 2038. But for planning purposes, you mentioned, we don't have to make decisions tonight, but we'll have to make some decisions at some point. What is a decision? What other recommendations are you going to, with what we need to do today, what we need to plan for five years, what we need to plan for 10 years, and what does that cost look like?
The cost, you need to decide. We went briefly at one of our public works meetings over the options that you have, whether you want to retreat from the waterfront, which I think your preliminary instinct was you don't, but you wanted to get the community's input.
Well, because that would require them.
It would impact.
It would impact the residents tremendously, yes.
So whether you chose to retreat, which some communities, Fredericksburg, Virginia, is actually going to abandon their downtown because they can't. They just can't. In 30 years, they're not going to be able to keep up with it. And even the naval station's having issues. You can require the finished floors to be higher. You could go ahead and raise your roads today, and I do have the cost for those. But then your road's going to be higher than your homes. So it's at what point the village wants to. And with, you already have the underground utilities. The sewer will be there. So all you will have to do was, would be to raise the top of the roads and adjust the rim. So it wouldn't be a huge cost if you wanted to delay that. But you could certainly, like Miami Beach has done, go ahead and do that. But it does have an impact to the look and feel of your community, as well as to your private. They recommended South Florida at least six feet, which would be about two feet for your southern, for 86 and 87. It would be a foot to two feet above what it is today.
So may I? So it was retreat, one option.
Yes.
Race the roads?
You could, you could accommodate.
Accommodate.
So you can make everybody's house flood-proof. You could make the roads so it can be submerged. And the floodwaters could come in, everybody get their kayak. You could do that. Or you could opt to raise the roads and everything up within the floodfront areas. Or you could try and do the seawalls and a pump system and try and fight it as long as you could.
The last question I had was, and maybe it's in here, and I'm sure I heard at the town hall, but that is something, I mean, clearly that requires a lot of planning, right? So it would be something that we should have in our radar to plan for. Really, when? Like, what does, what does South Florida regions say? Is it, is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 15 years?
I would look at 10 years. 10 years to have something in effect. And that's going to give you a little bit of time to see which of these curves is more accurate. I'm on a forum with NASA, and it's very interesting to hear how the federal government's coping with this. Because it affects the time that our military can train and all sorts of things that I had never really considered. I was, you know, trying to protect infrastructure. But it really does have an effect when so many of our academies and our naval bases are on the water. But they say the greenhouse gases, their emissions from 2002, the curves that they came up with were right on target with what they predicted then. But I think by doing 10 years out, that gives you some time to see whether the predictions are, yes. Before you, yes. Because I would hate for you to spend millions and millions of dollars only to find out in 20 years that it didn't.
It's a joke.
Yeah. If it needs to turn into Venice, you've got time to adjust. But maybe the scientists are overestimating. This is the best science available. It shows there's going to be an issue.
So in the interim, go ahead. You're going to give us the cost analysis?
The, the state revolving fund right now, the construction loans are at 0.5% versus the design at about 1.2%. The term is 20 years, which is why we did the 20-year to 2038. For the planning period, the facilities plan is step one in the DEP process. Step two would be get your design ready to go for whichever components of the facility plan you want to move forward with. Public hearing is required, which we had. The facility plan establishes the need for the project. Alternative analysis, which was a little more complicated than it was for the sewer. Description of the selected alternative, and then the environmental review, which is the wetlands. You don't have any wetlands that needed to be protected, but that's part of the state review. Then the capital financing plan and the resolution to adopt the plan by council, which is your item tonight to consider. Alternative number one that we looked at is what if the village does nothing? So.
Before, before you get into the number one, do nothing. So you, you all are making a recommendation tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So are you, is that number, alternative number three, we're going to call it?
It's a combination of, because you have so many choices, I wasn't able to do clear. I looked at 36 different options and evaluated them based on the number of homes that would be benefited by each of those options. Because you have different areas. You've got very different areas within the community, within the village. And then I weighted those price, price for home based on things like whether the village had the means currently to maintain those standards, whether the village had community support for those items. But yes, I, I did, we did come up with recommendations.
So you're going to walk us through this whole, this whole presentation, and you're going to go through in detail what the recommendations are and the impact?
Or I can skip to the detailed recommendations.
And then I want to hear from Robert. I mean, we're almost done with the presentation, right?
We are.
Yeah.
Passive strategies, things that you just have in the ground, you constructed. You don't have to go out and touch them. Active strategies, like the pump station, or something you have to go do in advance of a storm. Somebody had to go touch it. Vanna? Alternative analysis. We estimated the cost of construction long-term with the salvage value, operation, lifecycle cost. Weighted it based on the number of people who would benefit, the risk of flooding to the area currently. And in the future, the water quality benefit of the project, which the village feels is important, and so does the state. Community support for the project and availability of funding to do the long-term maintenance. Divided the basin into different drainage basins. And our alternative analysis. So these are all the different options that I, that we looked at for each of the different basins. Because each one has a unique characteristic. Sherwood Forest is different from the Southwest.
And the evaluation matrix rank is based on high would be the high priority?
Well, I think, I think I did low cost.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
High would be the high probability. And I just broke them into high, medium, and low because you do have some other factors that you might want to consider.
Do you have an extra one of these?
I do. So the cost, alternative act, the no action alternative, you will continue to see an increased amount of flooding over the next 20 years. So your property damage, your public and private property damage will increase. But the cost to implement would be zero. You will see a slight increase in your operation and maintenance cost. Option number two that I looked at was those with minimal operation cost, such as a seawall, your existing curb and gutter, your existing pipes, your existing exfiltration trenches. And then number three, things that someone has to physically go out and operate, which would be the stormwater pump station, operable gates. And you could actually have a seawall if you go out and you raise. So we looked at it. So with the matrix and the, those that were ranked high with the cost-benefit analysis, our recommendation is to do the surface conveyance improvements. So the gutter and the road grading in the area of the Phase 1 sewer project. So while the roads ripped up, the roads get graded to go to your existing grades, which that part has already been done. The village has already expended funds. Just take full advantage of what infrastructure you already have in place. We also recommend that you put some sort of gate valve that works on your four existing outfalls. And the next? The next sheet is our recommended projects are in the top in bold, with a bold line around it. And then other projects for you to consider at your leisure, whenever the village decides their priorities. Those are our next ranked projects.
And to be clear for the public, all of this cost that we're doing is part of the money that we received. Yeah, well, not the other plan. What Kelly has though?
Yes.
Are you done? You're done?
I am. Oh. Any questions for Kelly? I'd actually like to hear Robert. Robert Rono was asked to be the project manager on this to represent El Portel to keep Panoni in check. What I'd like to, what I'd like to, I want you all to really listen to this a little bit because what I'm about to say is, listen real quick. One of the things that we did was we asked our engineering firm that we've had for a while to actually take a look at this. And they did. That was a recommendation that Robert Rono made. So we want to hear what they, well, they did make a recommendation. So the email, I spoke to Robert today, and I want clarity because our Craig Smith made some recommendations. I think it's Craig Smith and Associates. Orlando Rubio, I think Steve Smith, made recommendations to be added to this before it's voted on. And I received a call today that it hadn't been added on, so I called Robert. So I wanted to, you to sort of give us what it is that they asked us to make sure that was included in, this whole project is being recommended by Panoni.
Sure. Robert Rono for the record. So basically, after they did the first iteration of this plan, I went through, I gave them feedback, they made changes. But before they did, at the last public hearing, I asked, or the last, I think, the roundtable that we had with yourself and the village manager, the attorney, I asked Craig A. Smith for them to look at it. They would, because since they had done the original plan, I wanted to make sure that they were okay with the overall plan. And the good news is they were. They had very minor suggestions. There is a sheet which I sent to all of you, and I think you have. It's labeled at the top, agenda item. It says requested action, and then it's got Page 1, Page 5, Page 13. Those are the changes. And they're minimal changes that were done. I sat, I sat with Kelly, I spoke with Kelly last week.
Can we get a copy?
Sorry. Here, you have copies. Here. That's the email that I sent this afternoon.
Yeah.
So basically, they were just clarifications they wanted in some case. They, the report said mangroves, that could add mangroves. And it's like, well, we can't really add mangroves here. It said to add trees in one place, talk about trees. The most, the only significant changes is that there was two outfalls that were removed from the figures because we didn't have quite the correct numbers. So Craig A. Smith could update and tell us, okay, these are the outfalls or two that are controlled by the, by Miami-Dade County, and then other smaller outfalls. And then the rest is just making things a little clearer, clarifying intent, adjusted estimate for outfall improvements for the, to exclude two-plugged outfalls. The one, the one, as Kelly mentioned, there was, their recommendations are passive and active recommendations. One, which is just a matter, I think, of opinion, and we can obviously change it later. We don't have to do it, was the operable gate valves at the outfalls, where they were a little bit concerned because the village, or Craig A. Smith said, their comment was, the village doesn't have the resources to do this. But they're, you know, and I agreed with Kelly, we talked about it, and I agree that they're, they are important, and the way they have those operable valves, you can do it without getting in the water, so it makes a lot more sense to do it. Basically, what that is, it just, it just stops the backflow of water into your streets. Like it happens in Miami Beach sometimes, where the water comes up for the, on a, on a clear day from the, from the storm drains. But they were very minor. You know, we'll, I'll be happy to share, share the link with Craig A. Smith. As we go forward, when we implement this, or we go to implement this, we can make changes to the, to the implementation of what we want to do. But overall, it was, there was nothing wrong with the plan.
Yeah, my only thing is, whatever recommendation changes that we think would, needs to happen, it should happen now when we're paying it now. Because if any recommendation was made in the future, we're going to pay the service again to be able to make any amendments or changes. So if there is something that Craig Smith has recommended that you think that we should do in two years, well, let's just do it now. Because then we're just going to have to, you know. So draw back and pay whoever it's going to be the one.
Their recommendations were nothing like that. They were just basically little areas. Their recommendations were nothing like that, they were just basically little areas, like, oh, you should mention this, or you should mention that, you should, but there was nothing of, like, you know, like I said, the only recommendation was the change of the operable valves, but that was it, everything else was, was fine.
So the change of the operable valves, we are gonna add it to the updated?
It is in the update.
Okay.
All these changes are in the updated one, and in the link that you received today.
Okay. And when do we actually get the updated, not that I'm gonna read all two hundred and fifty pages, but?
You have the link, you have the link in the email.
The link, okay.
You know, it's a, you know, obviously it's a big file, but you can, you can download it from the link.
The clerk is, the clerk is looking at me, because she knows exactly what I'm gonna say next, right? Is there any way that I could just, you all can just get me a copy of that?
You can keep this one.
Listen, I don't have, that's a massive document to open to my computer, it might bust my computer, I don't know. Now, I don't know. Any questions for, any questions for Robert?
Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, let's go ahead and, I asked the council, before I opened up to the public, any questions to either the manager, the attorney, Robert, Kelly, or Steve? With the recommendation, and do you completely understand what it is that they're recommending?
The only thing that I would say for, is adjusted estimated cost to exclude the two plugged outfalls. Appendix C.
To exclude the two plugged outfalls, yes, that cost went down. There were four.
Okay, okay.
There are two smaller ones on the very western edge that when Craig A. Smith did their, yeah, their last project.
My question was, how many were there?
There were four, and there are two.
Thank you very much.
Okay, before I go ahead and ask for a vote, I'm gonna open up a public comment, so the public that is here can address either the council or the engineering firm. So at this time, I'm gonna close the special council meeting, open it up to the public. If there's any resident here that has a question of anything that we've discussed on this particular item, use your time to come and ask any of us.
Brown and Brooks, four hundred north, East Ninetieth Street. This question is for Kelly. Did you make three recommendations, and one, I think you stated about raising the, the street?
We evaluated this.
Okay, because on Ninetieth Street, our street is high in the middle and comes down. So I don't think you would have to raise the whole street, because the center is high already, but then the water falls on the sides.
We looked at raising eighty-sixth or eighty-seventh, which are the, the lowest, not your street.
Okay.
We did not.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close public comments, open it up actually to the council. One last question, so when I take a look at the phase one sub-project construction cost, it's right here, right, and this cost as well as the estimated construction cost is part of the loan, correct? You wanna come? Because I'm looking here, it says total estimated nine fifty-six, one hundred percent loan, and then loan terms. Am I gonna?
Basically, the, remember, this is a three-step process, I know it's, you've got the sewer separate from stormwater. On stormwater, we're in step one, we're just in the planning stage. Step two, approve the resolution tonight. There's a hearing on May ninth, that would, the DEP would consider loaning the design money for step two, with, with, with design, basically the phase one recommended improvements. Construction, which would be the, we put a value of just under a million dollars, but if you do it at the same time as the sewer project, I think we estimated less than, I don't have the number in front of me, four hundred?
Four forty-seven, eight thirty-two.
Four forty-seven. If you do that at the same time as the sewer project, it would reduce the cost by that, about a half million dollars. So what we're proposing is to be heard for funding on May ninth, which is like next week.
That's why we're here too.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Then we would get it shovel-ready quickly and apply for funding in August for construction, so, so the sewer and the stormwater for phase one would be constructed, construction would break ground after the new year, most likely.
But the loans are what?
Yeah, the loan that would be, we would be requesting, we've already submitted the initial placeholder for, for May ninth, that's for about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, that would be for the design. That's just for the design for the next step. And then we would go back in August, well, we won't go back in August, we'll go back in November for the stormwater construction.
And the, and when, the one twenty-six design, that's enough to do the design?
Yeah, because we've already got the information.
We already got the survey.
We already have the survey done, we've already got the 3D model of your streets, we can, we can be relatively efficient doing that. That's why it was a big value proposition, basically, while we're doing it, you're never gonna get a better price, construction and design combined.
And, and, and pardon my, my, my next question, but so, the design that you all are going to do is going to be exactly what for the village?
You wanna comment on that, Kelly? I'll let her since she's yet to bring it up.
It's going to regrade the streets, get you gutters, so that you utilize the existing inlets, we might need to adjust some of the inlets, their elevations, because right now the, the stormwater ponds, and it gets in people's driveways, and even into some people's yards, so that's, that's what phase one would be, to make the roads actually drain to the inlets, which were designed, so you'll take full value of your system that you've already paid for.
And it would also include elevation, put a little hump at the end of proposed driveways, if, so that any run on the road wouldn't go down the driveways, so we could put a little hump at the end of the driveway, as appropriate.
Yeah. No, I, 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 I just wanted to hear you all say, because the other thing I want to add and be, I think it's important to remember, is if we get to the design stage, you know, we had a long discussion with Juan from Plaservia with regards to what, what's gonna look like. And when we start taking project and engineering it to the way that we engineers, no offense, may, it may take a look away from the feel of the village, so it's something that I want to be sure that when we, when you all, or if this goes to the extent that it does, then there needs to be an, an open dialogue where all the players are involved, especially Juan, because, you know, when you're talking about street designs, you know, no, no offense, it was not in your scope of services in your original contract agreement, so, and I know that, so I want to be sure that it's within the look of the field of what we want as a village.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I was sat at the city of West Palm Beach, so I'm very aware of what the...
Yeah, we are not West Palm.
No, but you all have your unique characteristics in each neighborhood, even in West Palm Beach, and I know how much effort you put into getting your new land development codes, and I have read them, but yes, ma'am, anything, and there will be room for a sidewalk, this funding would not be used to put a sidewalk in, but if you chose to do so, that's something we could talk about.
Any questions? All righty. Any questions? Norman, how are we doing?
So we're talking...
Go ahead.
So we're basically talking about kind of, you're talking about the gutters and things like that, it's kind of like the, like alternative two in a way.
Yes. Passive.
Passive.
With that said, if there's no questions on G1, the stormwater facility plan, thank you for the presentation, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the attorney to read the resolution twenty eighteen oh nine, facility plan into the record.
The resolution of the Village of El Portao, Florida, relating to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Small Community Stormwater Facilities Grant and/or State Revolving Fund Program, adopting the Village Development Portao Stormwater Facilities Plan for Stormwater Improvement Project and Capital Financing Plan dated April thirty, two thousand and eighteen, authorizing submission of the plan to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, designating authorized representative, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen oh nine?
I move to approve.
Motion's been made by Councilperson Mathis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Roman. May I just make a comment, in the resolution number, what is it, after one, two, three, the village of, is that a typo?
Yes.
It's got, it has the miracle letters. Yeah, highlighted, I'm gonna clear that up.
The votes are over top, doesn't base the votes, okay. The only thing I have, my other question for, I gotta vote, so this is gonna go before the board in May ninth, what happens next? That, we're, we're gonna have some, like, impending deadline, or we're gonna have to, like, run and come together, or, you know, so what happens next?
I say our intent is that it'd be heard on May ninth, but we have to understand that, that these applications and everything was due March twenty-fifth, so we're submitting documents pretty late here, so we're, we're begging to be added to the, to the hearing, but there's no guarantee of that. We still, I think, with the capital finance plan with our one, I know, I think we got that today, and this resolution will be the final pieces, but there's no guarantee that it's gonna be heard on May ninth. If it doesn't, the worst-case scenario is we would be heard August, at the August ninth We'll go to Plan C at that point. Our big thing is we want to get that sewer grant, so that's our first and foremost, so we're, we're, we're gonna apply for that on, for the August ninth hearing, we're hoping to marry this up, but if we had to put that on hold for another three months, we could do that. We'll just make the best decision at that time.
Okay. All righty, great, thank you. At this time, before, there is a motion to accept resolution twenty eighteen oh nine, before I go into council vote, I'll open up a public discussion, is there any public comments on resolution twenty eighteen oh nine? Which solidifies everything we just said, with regards to accepting for them to go before the board, to be able to apply for a loan, to, for the design. Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, may I have a motion to, may I have a roll call?
Roll call, Councilperson Drager is absent, Councilperson Roman?
Yes.
Councilperson Mathis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Cubillos?
Yes.
Motion passes forward.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, thank you, thank you, we're gonna go right into unfinished business and general orders, we don't have anything on the agenda, we don't have any new business, Good and Welfare at this time, if anybody wants to come up and ask anything about what we just discussed. Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the special council meeting? Motion's been made by Councilperson Mathis, second by Councilperson Roman, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, special council meeting adjourns at eight forty-five PM, thank you.